Alright, yes, deep work session, very excited for this one and I felt like doing one. Sometimes it's very, I don't know, it's very nice to just close of the world and just, just sort of do a deep work session and be alone with your, with your charts. I really liked that, I really enjoyed it as well. So that is exactly what we're going to do right now whilst I'm still talking of course, but uh overall, I have some music on which you can't hear right now. But I have some music on, very light in the background for myself, uh to sort of, because that's a trigger again, if you're not familiar with a deep work session. I try to get into a flow state and the way I get into a flow state is currently as well a little bit difficult because uh to get into a flow state, or at least how I do it, is you need to be in a familiar, in a safe area. Now, I'm in a pretty safe area, but it's not really familiar to me. So uh that makes it a little bit more difficult to get into a flow state, so music also helps to trigger the flow state for me. If I hear music that I like, or I just, just solving plays, then for me it's very easy to focus on what I need to do. So that triggers the flow state for me here. And that is exactly what I'm going to do as well. Then the next thing is, uh you won't hear me talk very much, but you'll hear me say the important things. So what do I mean by that? It's not where I go over forecast and I'm constantly ranting your ears off. No, it's, it's more so me again also finding my own understanding, as in finding the own understanding of the theory I'm trying to, to, to sort of understand in the market, if that makes sense. So it's also me focusing, I'm also learning something new, which I can then share to you. So that is exactly the plan right here. So let's dive into it. I want to go over GU. And we had the theory right now to touch on the theory again, uh a little bit here is, let's take that EU example. This was the theory. So on EU, we had this weekly fair value gap right there. And last time I did deep work session at the end, I got confused. Now I think I'm ready again to, to sort of uh conquer the confused, confusing part and to sort of overcome that. So the way I view that is right here. We have this context, the daily context right there. That daily context was finishing whilst we were having already a weekly flag. So why did we not come first into the weekly flag? To then already continue higher and why did we finish this daily context? Well, I think it's because the, the market is already in motion of finishing that context. So if we know that this weekly flag right there got created uh after this Friday, so on that Monday right there on this candle that is sitting right there. Then we also know right there, alright, the market was already in motion, so why would it stop right there? To then continue lower. It's first going to take this premium array and to use that premium array right there to then continue lower off of that. To sort of sweep that high to then continue lower towards that weekly for Vega. That's a theory that we are dealing with right now. This is a great example and uh we found some other great examples, but also some examples that were a little bit confusing last time. So here again, I just noticed as well, and we can add that to the list. Is that we have a previous week high of course that we're also sweeping in the meantime. So that can also something that in that moment that we trade off of that, then we make it a little bit more easier and we make the gap a little bit smaller as in uh instead of needing that daily context and needing that exact thing, a previous week low or previous week high in this case, sweep can also be enough. So I have a notion next to me on my laptop that um I will also share afterwards. But currently, I'm just going to type in that notion to share my thoughts. The same way we did with the Inesis filtering process, which eventually didn't lead to much, but well, it did. It wasn't, it's a deep work session never futile, it's never for nothing. That's what we need to understand. So uh how do we call this theory? Let's figure out a name. We call it uh returning context, uh finish, wait, finishing. Finish, I don't know, this is not a great name, finishing context. Finishing context theory. Finishing context theory, or you could also call ping pong theory where we just have the constant blow from premium discount, premium discount, because the thing here is what we also saw here, right? Uh I think this was one, I'm not too sure actually. Let me see. Where, oh no, this was a different one actually. This is not a great example. This was a different one right there where we already filled context, so that's not really relevant. Now I want to go over a different pair as well, not over EU again. And I want to incorporate more timeframes as well. We can, well, let's go over EU again and let's use the daily timeframe right now. And the four hours, so four hour context and daily fair value gaps. So let's mark out some daily fair value gaps. Let's see if we can get something. Hmm hmm hmm, on the four hour, let's see. Moi. Although here we see the same thing again, right? Can you see that? Previous week highs, previous day highs, sorry. Uh let me see. Previous X, previous X low sweep to then target the FEG and create unusual. And the basic thing that I just want to sort of test right here, because this is great. If we want to use unusual context right now. Then this can become very, very important, because if we know and the theory is finished, et cetera, and uh we have tested it enough. Then this right there, this sweep of that previous day high can already lead to us now having very clear context. Previous day high sweep to target that for Vega right there. On the 15 minute, find something to get involved in. Not the prettiest price action, but overall if we could have gotten involved, then this would have been a nice winner. So that is, it's very interesting, because that makes the unusual context as well a little bit easier to understand. And where the unusual context would actually be high probability, because I deem this as high probability. Unusual context, where unusual context can also be low probability if you don't use it correctly. That is the way I view it. Hmm, let's see, this one did not sweep the high before we came into the daily for Vega right there. If we did something on the four hour. No, but it was the same, it's again, when the, when the timeframe, the two timeframes are the same context, that's not really relevant. That is not really relevant. Let's see. We had this. This daily fair value gap right there, but it's a very small factor, I'm not going to count it. And let's see for this one. This was also in a monthly for Vega, so if we can get something right there with the unusual context to already potentially take a very early short, because let's say we are at that moment in time, flow trading. Now, of course, you don't need to do that, but if you are a flow trader and right there, you can get that daily Vega, then this candle, or well, after that as well. You can get very clear and you can have, you can enter very early. That's what I'm trying to say. You can enter very early right there. Did not have context on the four hour, so it's also not a great example, but this is where we have the daily Vega right there, so potentially there's something there where you can just enter extremely early. Because then it's the unusual context on the daily, that monthly, very valuable lower, it's a lot of things going for it. Hmm hmm hmm. Let's see. I think I wanted to see if they are correlated. The previous X low sweep and the four hour context as well, not really for, it's the same for our context, so it's not really relevant. It works, let me think. How many four hour candles are in a day? That is six. How many seven? Does that make a difference? Oh, very, very small difference, if any difference at all. Let me see this one. Because the, my thought process is here, if we create that data for a higher right there. And we have this potential sweep, which at that moment we don't know of course, that that is going to be a sweep. But if we create the four hour context and that four hour context right there with the daily for Vega, we have that sweep with the four hour context in combination with that. Overall being bearish, then we can get we can get s- involved so early, which could be very beneficial. It's the same for our context, why? Well, actually, not really. It's not the same for our context. Hmm, doesn't really show anything to be honest. It's not what I'm looking for currently. Not finding the best examples. I'm thinking, is that because of the daily or the weekly? Is that because of the four hour and the daily right now? The combination is not that great. Not too sure, not too sure. Well, this is again that same example what we had. That previous day high sweep right there to then come into the daily for Vega. Let's see if we actually swept the high first before we came into the daily for Vega. Yes. So that right there could allow you to be get involved so early on those shorts. It's very interesting. I don't believe I can go into the 15 minutes. Oh, I can, nice. Uh, stay the re, this NFP, yeah, that's NFP. Didn't have four hour context. Same thing happened here, right there. See. Hmm, same, it's very interesting that uh the weekly and the daily, they, they differ much more than the daily and the four hour. From what I'm seeing at least, currently in these current examples. Let's dive into another pair. Let's dive into another pair. Not because I want to cherry pick, but I just want to look at another pair. Let me see. Let's see. Hmm. This one did not do the context thing to them, but it's very interesting. It's like either targets, when it comes, it depends also on how the candle closed, I think, because right there the candle is just primed to trade into the daily VAG already. With uh same as this, that candle is already primed right there to trade into the daily VAG to then continue higher off of that. Where this candle is as well, but a little bit less so right there. The, see if the candle close right there really matters as well. Hmm. Hmm hmm. I want to switch back to the weekly. Let's switch back to the weekly, let's see if that really matters, the weekly and the daily or the daily and the four hour right there. I do not think we finished this context. It's the same context actually. It's purely the way I want to define it, I want to define it a little bit more, is that it's purely when we have that order flow lag. So the order flow lag is the daily order flow lag right there would be like this, and then you create the daily order for like higher right there, then we come back into it before finishing the weekly for Vega. Finish that and then target that weekly for Vega. That's what I want to see. Which currently we are not really seeing right now. Maybe on different times, et cetera, but overall, moi. Moi, moi. Daily, let's see. Yes, like this, but here we're not getting it clearly. Right there, there's something like that. When did we create that weekly for Vega though? That's also quite important to know. It's on what is it, 29? Yeah, 29. So no, it's not the same. Because here the weekly factor was already created when we went lower. So then the low would be different, because then the low would be this low right there. To then target the weekly for Vega. If that makes sense. It's just depending on when or which candle right there creates, because here we were not already in motion to finish this context right there. Uh or what I mean is, we were not coming into this to then finish the context right there, because here once we were creating this order for lack lower, or we already had it. Then uh this weekly factor was already existing, where on EU, we saw the weekly factor was not yet existing. That is quite interesting though. That is quite interesting, because that leads to it, understanding it better as well. Really more so the time factor, you could argue. It's the same context, so this is, these examples are not great, as in this is not a great example. Because this, but well, you could argue it's a good example, because here it's almost, well, yeah. It's, it's, I neglected, but I don't think I need to neglect it, because I think it's very clear here that once we have these examples, that it is going to trade into the weekly for Vega regardless. So if we have the daily and the weekly right there, then it is almost definitely going to trade into the weekly for Vega right there. Instead of respecting the days. That is very interesting, because now we, we have uh three levels to it, as in the first one was the EU example. Let me see, EU example. Um, we're in motion. I'm going to call that in motion, emotion. Two, uh GU example, what was the date on that? I'm not too certain. Let me see, actually, it was the same protection on EU, so I'm going to use that one as well. It is 0 October, 02 October. Uh let me do 29 actually, because that makes it clear, 29 of 29 of September. Uh weekly for Vega, FEG already created. Emotion, weekly, FEG not, not yet created. And then we had the third one, which was GU as well. And that is where the weekly and daily factor is the same, so no daily context, no daily uh no daily order flow lag, let's put it that way. Um, no daily order flow lag, same lag, same lag, same uh FEG. As on the daily and weekly. So weekly FEG gets traded into regardless. We would of course have to check that as well with uh weekly for Vega that didn't get traded into. Hmm, but then it really depends again on candle signs. Candle signs is really important as well here, because can you see the difference here between the other examples? Look at this, because right now the candle was very low close. So here you can, alright, if we want to trade into the weekly for Vega, what are we going to use to trade into that weekly for Vega from the discounted rate, in form of that previous week low? Let's see. Which, does it have daily context right there? When was that Vega getting created? It's, that is 14, that is 11 of March. Right there, alright, so yeah, it's the same examples that we had on GU example 29th of September right there. Because then this, very small for Vega though, but again, then it, it uses this already as discount, alright, it's quite uh uh it's a quite early discount that we reached for, so we're not really sweeping it. Then the previous week low right there is getting swept to then trade into the weekly for Vega. It's very interesting. Let's see. And hmm. I wanted to use this one, but that leads me back to as well overall seeing the context. Because if this was the context low at that time, then would you expect a retracement into that candle right there after this candle close? No, it's not very reasonable to then retrace and to then continue lower, which leads me back to the theory that we had. On the fair value, fair, fair value theory and breakaway gap that we also had. This is a great example right here, let me mark that, 28th of uh breakaway gap example, 28th of February 2022, yes. It's a great example here, because this is again that fair value theory. Where you have sell side, buy side, sell side, so only this right there is uh not for value. And we continue lower off of that. It's very interesting. Interesting, I like that. And it's also not incorporating the monthly right now, which is also quite important of course. But then why? Then why did we not trade into that weekly for Vega? That we're seeing right there, right after. Let's see what that looks like. Here the daily context did hold right there. It's quite interesting. That again shows the probability, right? That it's not a 100% thing. It's good to know. Well, of course, that was already pretty obvious, I reckon, but ugly price action here. It's December, that's funny. That's funny. It resembles the current price action as well. Let's see what happened here. And here we have the daily context. Wow, this is the exact same thing that happened on uh 29th of September this year. 2023, 2023, where we have that opposite daily Vega being created right there. It's her, and it was also NFP. Was it also? Yeah, 29th of September was also NFP. Ha, it's funny. That's funny. It's exact same kind of price action. Interesting. It's really interesting actually. And then this was 16th, so it first finishes that this context right there. And when was that? Need to make sure of that, wait. Where are we? I'm lost. There. Let me see. Um, on the 18th, 18th of September. Yeah, right there, and the Friday is a down day right there, then it still finishes this context to then target the weekly Vega. It's, it's very interesting, because at that moment in time if, if this theory again is, is still in the absolute beginning stages, this theory, so uh it's good to take a look at, but I would not advise to, to take it super serious right now. Uh well, of course, take it serious, but uh don't look to incorporate it immediately into your trading plan, but right here, this is still very interesting. As in, we finished uh taking that low and then right there, Friday is down day, so overall we first finish the context, then target that, so if you know that, then that Monday right there, that Tuesday potentially, you can target that low first. And then you can look to target after that potentially next week to target that high right there and the weekly for Vega. So that is very interesting. Let's see. Uh, let's see what happened here. Because you would argue, or I would argue at least, that this candle right there is pretty primed, as in it's pretty primed to trade into the weekly for Vega to then continue higher. You did not do. So let's see. Fourth of August. And it's by then, right there. It's also funny that that August, but overall I would expect, I would have expected here, and again, that's a probability displaying out of course. I would have expected right there to move into the weekly for Vega, if we go off the theory that we also use overall. Yeah, definitely, would have expected to move into weekly for Vega, which we did not get. It would be a broker thing, but I do not think that is a broker thing. I just think we did not trade into the weekly for Vega. This, right here, the reason I'm not using some for Vega apps is because I'm not cherry picking, believe me, I'm really not. Trying to at least, if I am, then always feel free to, to tell me, but this for Vega right there, there's no chance that I would expect after this candle to come back into the weekly for Vega. That's just not really what I would expect. What is this? This is COVID, I think, no? Yeah. Ooh, let's not look at that. Uh, let me see. Hmm. Hmm, right there, we have the same previous previous week low sweep. Let me see some more here, because I also want to look at this weekly for Vega right there. So the next one as well, yes, but it's this one as well, want to look at these three. And let me, no, let me actually look at four. This is a nice price action here. When was this? It's quite nice, at least it looks nice. Let me see, on the daily timeframe, we had this one right there. It's the same context again, so it reinforces the idea where it's the same context. So uh it's going to trade into the weekly for Vega regardless, because it's same context. Same context is very interesting, that it trades into that. Right here, there's, they not create for Vega higher, so it's actually the same context as well, so it's going to trade into that. It's also super interesting, alright, let me check. It's actually as well the same context. Why is this all the same context? But we also got the previous week low sweep right there, so this is actually 2019 and the summer period and the fall period. This is uh, when this theory really came to life. As in it's perfect example of the theory, but let's see, here the daily context got respected again. Is there a reason for that? I don't want to get too crazy, but is, can we base that on the fair value theory that we had? Because here you would argue that we have sell side, uh buy side, sell side, so everything below here is not fair value, meaning that this is the only fair Vega right there that actually needs to trade into, so it continues lower off of that. Might be me looking too far into it, but it does make sense in my eyes. Uh let's, let's dive into that a little bit deeper, wait. This is also very interesting, right? Because sometimes we also see that, that previous day low sweep already right there. Then it, then it is, for me, that is like almost a confirmation that we definitely are going to trade into the weekly, uh into the daily Vega right there. Interesting. Let's see. Let's look at another pair, of 10 dollar US dollar. Let's see. Here, we actually saw the same this week. We actually saw the same this week. Did not pay attention to it, to be honest. Where it is the same context, so it's again definitely going to trade into it, but we did already, oh, wait, 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 is it same context? That is uh 27, that is fourth, that is the first, first. So right there, we were about to finish the context, then boom, come into it. It's very interesting price action actually. When you look at it through these glasses, then this price action makes a lot more sense as well. Where you create this unusual context right there. Continue lower off of that. Continue lower off of that, potentially on the one hour even. It makes a lot more sense as well eventually. There's still something there. As in, that is very interesting. I didn't, I did actually not pay attention to this week right there that it happened on Australian dollar, US dollar. Very interesting. I'm going to take a wild guess right there. Hmm, is it a wild guess? Probably not, but uh that we have the same context. Uh, let me see. Yeah, it is the same context. I did not remember the price action. When I zoomed in, I did, but at that moment in time, from the weekly standpoint, I did not remember it, but the reason I said that, the reason I said I think it's the same context is because we did not sweep this previous week high right there to then come into it. Which leads me to think the previous X high, previous X low sweep is related to that context. When we have context, it's likely going to sweep that high right there to then come into the weekly VAG. When it doesn't have context, uh it's just going to target the, the VAG instantly. Because here you did not have daily context, you did not have daily order flow uh already. That's very interesting. I need to write that down actually. Uh, scenario, scenario one and two with context is usually a previous X low, previous X high sweep. Where where scenario three is uh not a sweep, but just straight, just straight up a move, straight up a move into the weekly FEG. Alright. Hmm, did not come into this weekly VAG, although that is again, that, that would definitely be by the looks of this, uh would, well, yes and no, because I can also see why it didn't do it because we have that low very close to it. But it's definitely a move. Well, actually, I, yeah, 100%. I would expect a move right there first into weekly VAG up to then continue lower, which we did not get. Alright. Let's look at this. This VAG and this VAG as well. That is the, what is that? First? No, no, no. 29th of September. And this is uh 18th, 18th of November. It's the same context. Same context, so we did not get a sweep. Correct. But we did already get the sweep last week though. As in, in the same week that the VAGs are getting created. Where this area is super interesting. Once we create that low of that potential VAG, you have that last bounce right there. And then that last Friday, you can look to target already the potential weekly VAG. That's very interesting price action. It's very, very interesting. See on the one hour. Yeah, that's a very nice price action actually. So I continue lower of that. It's very interesting. Alright, let's see this one. Same context again. Hmm, did we first, I reckon we first took the high or the low? Hmm, wait, let me check that to be certain. That is 3rd of October that we opened up. Oh, we first actually took the high. That is so interesting because that reinforces the thing that we had with scenario three. Where scenario three is where we have the weekly VAG, daily VAG, it's the same context. As in, it's just, there's no order flow lag um hovering below the weekly VAG right there. So it's the same context. And here we again see that we are not sweeping that low first, although we were closer to it. We first come into that, so we straight away trade into it and then we target lower. That's so interesting. Same thing we're seeing right there. But this one is a really interesting example. Hmm, it's very interesting. I like that. Hmm, what happened here? We did have the context right there. And what happened here? Ooh, this was ugly price action. August as well. Same. Uh, what is it? Same uh, same context. Same context, no sweep. Same context, no sweep. Same context, no sweep. So let me guess, is it the same context right there? Same context, no sweep. Yes, it is the same context. Ah, we do gotta sweep the left right there, but that's not really relevant this moment in time. We got this low taken right there, but when was that VAG being created? Hmm. Yeah, that again leads to the same factor where we have it's the same context overall, but uh we did sweep that low right there to then target that. Because we're finishing that context at this moment. Once that candle opens, we create a weekly VAG, swing low, swept, target weekly VAG. We need to see this over and over and over again to fully be able to understand it as well. And to then potentially look to see, you wouldn't use this as in it's not that I'm going to use this, I can already tell you that. It's not that I'm going to use this in uh in a context where you would say uh mechanically. No, 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 this is to build onto the intuition, intuition part. That's what the D-works is also for. It's not necessarily mechanical. It's more so building onto our experience. That's important. I think the low here is that, that is the low of the VAG, 100%, but got closed right there. So it did sweep that high right there to then come into it. There's definitely something. There's definitely something. I wonder if this is the same context because why did it not, look at how low that close is right there. If that is the same context, then that's crazy because that low is so low right there. That low, or something happened in the previous week already, but because it's not the same context. It is the same scenario where we finish that right there. It's the scenario two. The weekly VAG is created right there at that moment in time. Once we finish that, then we come into scenario two. Let's define it by scenario right now. Let's try to more so define it by scenario. So you have scenario one, two and three. Let's see. Then from there we can potentially work with something. This scenario three, right there, scenario three, because we have the overlapping. They're the same context on the daily and the weekly is the same. Hmm. Now what is that? It's the same as well. Although you could argue this is an extra one because it's not the same, it's not uh, how do you say that? It's not the exact same context. As in, you still have one lag lower, just doesn't have the VAG. So this is where we do have this, this sweep light right there. So this could be scenario four or uh, I would argue three. And then change the previous one to, to four, but we'll just leave it in the middle right now and not add it onto it just yet. But this is also interesting because it basically does the same exact thing. It's right there, finish that context here. Let's see. Let's see what does this weekly VAG tell us. And this one. It's not the same context. Weekly VAG is created after this candle, so right there. Then it's a previous am I saying that correctly? Yeah, that's previous week high sweep to then come into it. That's very clean. That again, that is, what is that? Scenario, uh scenario one. No, no, no. Scenario two? I'm getting confused about scenarios right now. Weekly VAG was created right there. Uh. Yeah, that, that is scenario two. This is where we then come into it, right there. This is scenario one, where it's not created yet, right there. And we use this right there to then come into it. This is an interesting scenario. We have not seen that before, I believe. It is the same context though, so this is where scenario three, where we trade into it. Um. This is a very weird scenario actually. It is the same context, you could argue. We're again sweeping that high right there. So the way I want to see this again is, that's also what I'm going to end it with right now, is uh we're sweeping that high and we're using that high to then come into the weekly VAG. So this creates unusual context that we can potentially capitalize on in the future as well. Very interesting. It's definitely something we are going to dive deeper into as well. It's a really interesting theory that we have right here. We have scenario one, two and three. So we've more so defined it right now, which helps it as well a little bit. Basically same context, but it's again the same thing where we sweep that low, or at least we well, I'm going to count that as a sweep to be honest. We sweep that low right there, come into the weekly VAG and we failed to create the daily VAG lower, which again adds onto the idea of that being a sweep to then come into the weekly VAG. It's very interesting, very interesting. This is a great theory. We're definitely looking to add onto this as well. Alright, perfect. Thank you.